One, welcome to the Bossier City Council. Today's date is the seventeenth of April, two thousand seventeen, three P.M. We have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Scott Orwin. Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful spring day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we pray for all the citizens of Bossier City, especially those who are ill, those who are hurting. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation, for our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Approved minutes of the third of April, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting, dismissed with the reading.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. And do we have any changes?
No, sir.
No changes. Approved agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Thank you. Please cast your vote, council. Do we have special guests today or any ceremonial matters before the council? Next item, committed reports.
Stacy Fernandez.
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial statements for March two thousand eighteen. If you look on page one, it's revenue by fund, it's favorable at a hundred and eleven percent. On page two are expenses by fund, which are favorable at ninety-four percent. On page three is our sales tax and year-to-date collections are six point eight percent better than prior year. Page four is our manning. And we are currently at six hundred and sixty employees, which is thirty-two below budget. And finally, on page five, it's the water and sewer funds. We're favorable for the month at one seventeen. Year-to-date, we're at ninety-six percent. And the rolling twelve months were a hundred and eight percent. Do you have any questions?
Is there any comments that you might have about the six point eight percent increases? Is it identifiable as something that's a trend or just good news?
I believe oil and gas is picking back up.
That's the primary source of...
That's the primary reason for the increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. The next committed report before the council is Mr. Mark Hudson, the city engineer. I think he may have a PowerPoint presentation.
No, sir.
No, not today? Okay.
He's gonna wing it today.
Hey, council.
Hello, Ms. Hudson.
I just want to brief you on the projects we've got going on. I have no overhead, but I know you all know where the streets are. Ballpark Drive, it's done. Go check it out. It turned out pretty nice. Wimple Road, it's under construction. We got a good contractor. He's working hard. He's making good progress. And he's gonna build us a good road. Yesterday, it was brought to my attention that we have a bust in quantities. This project's gonna run short about seven thousand five hundred cubic yards of dirt. This is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar change order, an increase. I visited with Butch. He's gonna try to help us with the additional money. I don't have the exact quantities yet, but I'll report them to you as soon as I get them.
This is the Wimple Road project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Was it missed bid or how we run short?
Well, we have bid quantities. And the quantities provided to us had this error in them. We should've, the bid should've included another seven thousand five hundred yards of filled dirt. It won there. Shed Road.
Where did that error occur?
The design engineers provide us with the design quantities that we bid, and the error was there.
And their estimation?
Yes, sir. Any other questions about Wimple? Shed Road, eighty-seven percent of the times have been used, fifty-four percent of the jobs complete. The last several weeks, our contractor has made good progress, and you can tell a difference. The short-term goals are to have that corner of Shed and Airline at the Circle K, that corner, complete in about three weeks, so all of that, those barricades will be gone hopefully in that timeframe. And we're still shooting for the end of May to have the street, all the lanes poured from Airline Drive over to Doctor's Drive. That's that portion of the street in front of Casio's and those other businesses.
Will they be open then?
Yes, sir. We'll have two lanes of traffic then. And the project won't be finished, we don't think, until October, but at least we'll restore two ways of traffic, and most of the chaos will be gone from the front of Casio's.
Has that been communicated to them?
Yes, sir. They were happy to hear it.
There's always chaos there with Tony there.
Sir?
There's always chaos there with Tony there.
Well, they're good guys, and they've been very patient. Brownlee Road, right-hand turn lane, it's out to bid. We're gonna open the bids May the fifteenth. Right-hand turn lane on Sunflower Road, it's being designed by our friends at DOTD. They'll be finished soon, and we'll put it out to bid right thereafter. Coleman Street and Viking Drive, there's both federal money involved in those projects. And we're at the sixty percent point now with our design. We have to stop work right now and wait for environmental clearances to be accomplished. Those are being done down in Baton Rouge, so we're just kinda on standby, waiting for that to happen. Innovation Drive, it's gonna bid May the fifteenth. The plans are gonna go out tomorrow. We have about fourteen acres of wetlands to mitigate. We're gonna work through that process concurrently while this project bids. The estimate's a ten million dollar project, which is a little bit less than the number I mentioned before. I think it was fourteen million last month, but the real deal number's a ten million dollars. And I wanna give a shout-out to Michelle and Lily in purchasing, who are working really hard to get this project out to bid, like they do all projects. US-80 improvements, that portion of the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way that involves US-80. I met with the utility companies yesterday. I call them the big three, Slepco, Center Point, and AT&amp;T. AEP's gonna start relocating their poles in about four weeks. Center Point's gonna start June the first. They tell me they don't have much to do. And AT&amp;T has actually already started. They're doing their work back off of the road, but it's all in preparation of this project, which I hope to bid the first week of July. The working budget for that right now is ten million dollars.
What's that? That ten million, tell me where that was coming from.
That was coming from the bond issue, the...
Which one?
I don't know the name of it.
Is it for Intermated?
No, no, no. For the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way, that US-80 portion? Well, anyway, if you wouldn't mind, I'm trying to keep that in my mind. In other words, we had the forty-five million originally. Is it coming out of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in line with that, do you have that, those various segments and the costs so that we have some type of quantifiable basis for a budget for all phases of that Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way?
Pretty much, yes, sir. The big float and unknown out there is a cost of right-of-way for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way, but...
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead of you. If I am, I apologize.
No, but I could...
You can get that to me.
I can get that to you, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way, the big project. Met with the designers last week. There's not much new to report there. They're just working away. They're visiting frequently with the Corps of Engineers, and they tell me the guys over at the Corps being helpful and responsive and helping them with their problems and questions that they have. Planned delivery date is still October twenty eighteen. I know Pam works, I don't know, every day, but maybe every other day on right-of-way issues on the Carriage Way, so we're trying to make that happen, too. And one last thing, I'll mention to you, the arena, it's not a roadway project, of course, but we're about to open bids on the new marquee sign. I got my fingers crossed we get a good contractor and a good price there. But the seats are actually being installed right now. They look really nice. And next week, we'll start the arena improvements. Recall, we opened those bids a council meeting or two ago. They're gonna start next week with all of those improvements at the arena. And left to go, there's three big projects at the arena. There's, we're gonna need a new roof. Roof's in pretty good shape now, probably not this summer, but next summer would be a good time to bid that. We have parking lot improvements. Parking lot's really not in that bad a shape, but there's some repairs that need to be made to it. Maybe late this summer, we can do that. And last but not least is kitchen equipment. All of that stuff's original, and it's really expensive. It's probably a quarter of a million dollars' worth of fryers and griddles and ice machines and things like that. So, that's the big three projects left to go after we open the marquee sign here in just a few minutes.
Ms. Hudson, with the seating, is that going to conflict with the graduation exercises, or is it gonna be done before?
No, sir. The reason it's taking so long is because they can work a few days, then they gotta go away. They were making great progress, but they had the Foo Fighters, you know, this past weekend, so they had to go away for that. They gotta get everything buttoned up and safe for the next big event. Then that happens, then they come again, so it takes a while, but the contractor knew that all along. And that's all I have, council. If you got any questions, or if you wanna go into greater detail with any of these, I'm happy to do it with you.
Mark, one question that's not on that. Does the DOTD or the Federal Highway Administration communicate to your office any about I-20, specifically the roadbed that's between the racetrack and the river?
They invite me to those meetings when they have a group to talk about them. I was at a meeting about I-20 a few months ago. If it's big projects that he knows the city's interested in, they'll invite me so that I kinda know what's going on. It's their highway, it's their money, but just out of courtesy, they include me.
Is there, I mean, just on the spot, and you could, and I don't know is a fine answer, but is there a picture in your mind of when they're gonna do something about the...
Rehab I-20?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The last meeting we have, they admitted that the previous meetings over the last couple of years was kinda pie in the sky, that they weren't entirely sure it was gonna happen. They admitted that. They tell me this time, this one's really, really gonna happen. They really got the money, they tell me. And I think this project was set to bid in the year twenty twenty, but I need to confirm that. I'll get back to you on that. It's not just right-of-way.
We don't need to do it now, but I, well, I, I just, in the last, I guess, over some period of time, you begin to kinda pay a little more attention to that, and it doesn't make sense to me that that highway is gonna, is gonna last. I don't think that highway's gonna last very much, a longer period for common travel. You, I invited any of y'all to go just take a little study look, but when automobiles and trucks, particularly ones that have trailers and stuff, travel down that highway, they hit places in the highway that make the vehicle move with such vertical motion that it drags on it. It comes back and hits on the driveway, and that, I don't know, I don't think it's an overstatement to say that for that piece of highway from Two Twenty to the Red River, I don't know of a interstate highway anywhere that's in worse shape than that from just, I mean, just, you know, those huge rumbles that you hit on each expansion joint, your car just boom, 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 and then the people that are next to you are moving, you know, it's just like a roller coaster or something, and I, it, it's a funny thing, it just isn't in my normal travel, but I really, I really think that we need to think about the consequences of the demise of that highway, 'cause if it's not gonna start for a couple of years, I mean, my way of looking, it's not long before, you know, before accidents begin to happen on a real, regular basis just because of the severe irregularities in the roadbeds.
Well, I'll get more accurate information for you on that. I'd've had it for you, but didn't know you were gonna ask me about that.
Well, and I wasn't looking for something today. I just, I wanted to just raise the, I guess, the awareness of it, because it's, I know we talk about it, and I see these studies, and it just seems like they're forever studying something with, in Alcoa or whatever it is, but it's really, that's gonna be something I don't think is gonna last.
You know, Mark, I'll second what Tim's saying, but I was driving down there, and a boat trailer hit the ramp at Benton, and the fenders flew off. It was so, such a jolt. I went to the DOTD to talk to them about that. They couldn't give me an exact date, but they told me they were working on it. I'm like, well, something has to be done. I avoid it if I'm pulling a boat or camper. I go industrial or I go a different way, because it would damage my equipment. But other people don't know that. I don't know if those big lit-up signs where you suggest people with trailers use Two Twenty or something of that nature. I know there's liability involved when you do that, but there's also liability when people are losing control of their vehicles on I-20. It's that bad. So, I don't know if you could talk to them about that, if they say it's still two years from being bid out.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We brief that to the Joint Transportation Committee every year when they come around with that road show, and we put it on the formal list of projects we wanted. We put it in writing, and we've been doing so for the last four or five years in cooperation with DOTD. So, we've been formally requesting it, and we've been told that it would start down there at what that road that crosses is of?
Westerfield.
Yeah. So, they know exactly what it is. They know what we want. We prioritize it under seven most important projects in cooperation with DOTD, but beyond that, I don't know what the...
I certainly didn't mean to suggest that it's really not Mark's department, as I see it. I mean, that's a, that's a federal highway, but it, God, it's just, it's scary. I really, I think we oughta, I think we oughta formally take some steps, and I'm not ready to say something today, but I'll have more to offer about that, just rather than wait.
Yeah. David North is well aware of the problem. You might wanna talk to him, but David North, the DOTD?
I've talked to him about it. Just, he didn't tell me anything different from what Mark just said.
Well, when I walked away from that last meeting, it was a few months ago, I felt confident that the money's there, and I felt that the date they mentioned, even though I can't really tell you what it is, I didn't commit it to memory, but I left with a certain degree of confidence that it's really gonna happen, this go-around. But again, I'll get back to you with that, with the details.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, council.
New business, please.
Unfinished business, adopt an ordinance appropriating...
Unfinished.
Appropriating two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the two thousand eighteen EMS Capital and Contingency Fund to purchase nine Ucap inventory management machines and lockers. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's see. Yeah, we got a motion, a second. Anyone like to comment on item one, under unfinished business? Please cast your vote. All right, so I'll try to slow my roll. Now, new business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for CenturyLink Center Monument Sign.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is two hundred and seventy thousand. The approved budget is three hundred thousand. It's being funded by the two thousand seventeen LCD A bond. There are two addendums. The first addendum scheduled a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. The second addendum were changes to plans and specs and a list of the pre-bid attendees. The first bid is from Bossier Sign Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred fifty-four thousand, one oh seven point four four. The next bid is from Munn Enterprises, Inc. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred forty thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and five cents.
Ms. Fernandez, would you read the bid amount for Bossier Sign Company again, please? Just the amount?
Yes, sir. Two five four, one oh seven point four four.
Thank you.
And the last bid is from Wellhide Electric. They acknowledged the addendums. The bid bond is included. It's for two hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars even. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to establish a disaster relief fund. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with John Young, Michael G. Stagg, LLC, and Smith Stagg, LLC, and Smith Fire, LLC, Alvinada, Kelly, and Demarest, LLC, Chi Hardy, Sherman, Williams, Murray, Resile, Steaklum, and Hayes, LLP, Anthony, Arapino of Arapino, Alvin, and Hawkins, here and after, the attorneys for the purpose of providing legal services related to the filing and litigation of a civil action for damages sustained by the abuse of opioids. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? As, council recall that Mr. Hall gave us explanation last week regarding this ordinance, and it's critical going forward, I believe. Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote, council.
A public hearing for the amendment to the fiscal year two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen action plans for community development block grant funds?
Good afternoon. We're proposing today to, we had some two thousand sixteen public services funds that we can't spend now that we're in two thousand eighteen. We have two years to spend those without going over a cap that we have. So, we're proposing to move those to the ramps and critical repairs program, and, 'cause there's a need there for the money, so the amount's only six thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, so it's not that much.
Okay. This is a public hearing. It's open at this point. Is there anyone from the public like to comment? Okay, we close the public hearing. Next item?
Adopt a resolution, adopt an amendment to the fiscal year two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen action plans for community development block grant funds. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone? Please cast your vote, council.
Mr. Larkin, thank you. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one employee due to resignation and restructuring of the tax department, all within the existing budget. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Floor is open for someone to speak. Please cast your vote, council.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one police sergeant. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one recreation maintenance worker, one for Parks and Recreation in Backfield. Any vacancies created by transfer or promotion? First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an equipment operator, one for the Public Works Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Anyone like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a GIS technician for Engineering Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, council.
In accordance with Louisiana Revised Stat Sheet forty-three colon four, select Bossier Press Tribune as the city of Bossier City's official journal for a one-year period effective June first, two thousand eighteen, through June first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Anyone like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for Great Strides to Report Bossier City, May fifth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Last item? Comments? Please cast your vote. Any announcement before the council? Me to stand, so join. Mean to stand's adjourned.